I like my chair better.
Here.
James.
So, like, um, here.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't have any announcements, looking to staff for any announcements? None, okay, then we will go on to public input for anything that is not listed on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. The minutes that we're looking for are listed in the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll look for a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the July 12, 2023 special meeting minutes, along with the July 13, 2023 special meeting minutes and the July 18, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
This is Matt Heller, and I will second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to authorities, boards, and commissions. The Sklo Library Board of Trustees, Ms. Barbara Ziff, please.
Ms. Ziff will not be joining this evening, but her report is provided with the agenda packet.
Awesome, I did read that in there, so, all right, thank you. And special reports and acknowledgements. The DEI Initiatives and Acknowledgement is a month-long observation of Black August. Okay. Move on to Township Financial and Fiscal Responsibility. Center Help's Donation Report from the Executive Director, Denise McCann. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So, as you know, Ferguson Township provided $20,000 for us to assist families with. To date, we have spent all but $1,200 of that money, so, as you can see, it was very greatly needed. Since my last report, we have served 17 additional families. And just as a refresher, through our Basic Needs Case Management Program, we provide help with security deposits, rents, utilities, and those kinds of basic needs that help people maintain their housing and avoid eviction or avoid utility shut-off. And in addition to that, we have a hotline, which is information and referral. So many of the families that we serve through Basic Needs and who receive this fund come to us through our hotline program. And that hotline is also connected to the National 988 Suicide Crisis and Prevention Lifeline. So those 17 families that were served, now, these numbers aren't going to add up to 17 because some of them fall into multiple situations, but just to give you an example of some of the situations that you've assisted with. So three of those families were families that went into senior living and needed help with security deposits to get into that housing. Three of those families were single parents that needed assistance to maintain their homes, and that was maybe because of COVID, losing work due to COVID still, and other medical situations with the children. We had two people that were in very serious car accidents that lost time at work and just needed that one, that help for that one month, just so they could get back on their feet. In total, we helped six people avoid eviction and then multiple others get into housing, either Section 8 housing or senior living housing, which would be more affordable housing for their family and for their budget. So we are really grateful that we have this tool to work with, because when we get situations and we can't help families, it's very heartbreaking and very frustrating for everybody involved. And also, I just want to point out that in addition to providing these funds that stabilize, our case managers are providing them with connection to mental health resources, to food resources, and also financial planning and budget management, so that they can, we can get them stabilized and they can maintain that stability with their family. So again, we appreciate your support greatly, and are there any questions?
No, I don't have it, Jeremy, no, no, thank you, thank you so much for the work you do there.
Okay, thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right then, we will move on to Community and Economic Development, a presentation for review partnership with Center County Housing and Land Trust, Missy Schoonor.
Well, I didn't realize Denise was going to be here right before me, that just illustrates housing and the need, the need in our area is far-reaching, so, thank you Denise. Hi, I'm Missy Schoonover, I'm the Executive Director for the Center County Housing and Land Trust, and I'm also a Ferguson Township resident. My husband and I moved into the township in 1999. When I looked that up today, I was like, wow, that was two days ago. Because we do have some new members on the board, and since COVID, it's the first time for us to really be together in person, I just wanted to give you a little brief history of the land trust and Ferguson Township's involvement with us, kind of where we are today and where we're looking to go in the future. So back in July of 2008, the Center County Housing and Land Trust received our 501(c)(3) designation, so it's our 15th anniversary. Our agency was created out of a community need. There was a mobile home community in Patent Township, it was called Milot, it's where the current Trader Joe's Plaza is located. And there were going to be 67 households displaced when that trailer park was sold for development. So the community really rallied together and said, what can we do to make a difference, even for, you know, for some of the people that are going to be displaced, or for just the housing issue that we were facing? So we were born out of a community effort. We are in partnership with Habitat for Humanity and with support from Patent Township in that development, which we call Thompson Place. We have one mobile home resident who is still there, living in his home, he was there back in 2008, so we were able to have him stay with us. We have two homes that the land trust has constructed, and we also have 11 homes that Habitat has constructed. So these are all owner-occupied, these are homes that people own. This is workforce housing. In 2010, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with Center County Government, and they provided some much-needed funding to our agency, as well as providing a member of the Planning and Community Development Office to serve on our Board of Directors. Currently, we have the County Director of Planning as a director, and the Fair Housing Officer for Center County serves as administrative support for us. Moving forward to the summer of 2015, my hometownship, Ferguson Township, reached out to the, to the organization that my husband and I had been active with since before it was incorporated, and said, we would like to have some help. What do we do if we go down this path of workforce housing? This is when the first workforce housing ordinance was being reviewed and contemplated here in Ferguson. What would administration of a program look like? What would policies look like? So at the time, the land trust was able to, to work with then-staff and kind of flesh out what some of that could look like. That ordinance was passed in this very room in April of 2016, I was sitting back, almost where CNN is sitting today. And then in October of 16, we entered into a formal arrangement with Ferguson Township through an MOU. As a part of that MOU with Ferguson, like the county, Ferguson Township has a seat on our Board of Directors. And that can be the Township Manager or a staff member that they designate. The previous Director of Planning and Zoning served in that role, and Ms. Worgo currently serves in that role. And just as a, just as a side note, I cannot tell you how critically important it is for us as a land trust to have these planning professionals with all of their expertise on zoning, and how do plans come together, sit at our table and be a part of these conversations, as we're looking for ways to make some, make some meaningful changes in our whole entire Center County community, to bring more housing to be available for more people. So that has just been, I can't say enough how wonderful it has been to have Ferguson Township at our table. Also in 2016, College Township and Patent Township came alongside us to provide some financial support, following Ferguson's lead. It's important to note that, because we, unlike other land trusts across the country, we're not eligible to receive those federal or state housing dollars. We serve all of Center County, with the exception of the borough. We're not attached to one single municipality, so that limits us in what we can receive in those HUD dollars. So every support we get from municipalities, I say we're a grassroots organization, because we have a lot of community members who give us a lot of small donations, just to help us keep going and doing what we're doing. In 2017 November, I officially came on board as the Executive Director of the Center County Housing and Land Trust, and that was when we finally finished Thompson Place. That last house was constructed, and a person that worked in finance at Penn State University was able to buy that first home for her and her child. In 2021, I just want to talk a little bit about some other things that we have going on with some other municipalities, that, that could be things that we're looking at and we're talking about within here in Ferguson Township. In 2021, we entered into a formal MOU with College Township, we'd already had the relationship with them, but we entered into a formal document with them for the administration of their workforce housing program. Where, we were already with Ferguson, but we didn't have any units yet. So college had some units that were, we were pretty sure that this development was going to happen, so they needed an administrator for that program. So we came on board and worked with the developer, worked with the municipality, worked with their planning office within college, to help create that program, so that when they were ready to build, we were ready to have those units. In 2021, Patent Township received recommendations from an Affordable Housing Task Force, and they designated funds from the American Rescue Plan to go towards affordable housing. So I just share that to show that here in the center region, we're really blessed by elected officials and staff who understand that housing is an issue. So just again, we, we thank you for that support. What's happening today? It's been a busy week. So last Thursday, we were able to have a dedication of our newest home in partnership with Habitat for Humanity in the Phillipsburg Borough. This was an interesting project, because it's a formerly blighted property, we're talking, it had been vacant for 16 years. In a residential neighborhood, it was not safe, so we were able to take possession of it, demolish it, Habitat built a beautiful home, and a wonderful family is now living in this home in Phillipsburg. And because of the partnership with the land trust, that home is permanently affordable, because it is affordable through a land lease and a deed restriction for 99 years, which means when these homes sell, they're going to be sold to someone else who qualifies in that workforce housing, just not enough to get in that first home. So that was a really big day. Earlier in the day, Hawbaker was in Center Hall digging a foundation for the next house, so the good work continues. So by the end of next year, we will have two more homes in the Center Hall Borough, with Habitat, for two more wonderful, wonderful families who are so excited. The, the rental program that I talked about with, with College Township, the ordinances between the municipalities are somewhat similar and somewhat different. So in College Township, they have, they have a rental component, just like we have here in Ferguson, and with theirs, it generated 28 workforce housing units in a multifamily building that's going up right now. So what we did as the land trust, under our memorandum with them, and we would do it with, with Ferguson, we've actually been through this process a couple of times for a plan that had been approved here in the township, that it wasn't built, but we've, we've worked on this with Ferguson. We were able to create the training, the, the policy, help, help the creation of the policy, the program manual, I did the training with. I did the training with property management. I'm the liaison. The land trust, I, I keep saying I, I'm the only staff member of the land trust. So if I keep saying I, it's not because, you know, I'm neglecting a team. It's just me. I'm the liaison between the developer and the township staff. I'm the liaison between the developer and the property manager if they hire someone else to do it. But right now, what I'm doing, we have 28 units, 17 are verified and leased of those units, and I have been able to work to make sure that what the elected officials in College Township intended their program to be and what staff codified through all of their work is happening on the ground. So I, I play that, that role in housing so that the township doesn't have to create a new position or try to do that on their own. We're going to be working with Patton to create a first time home buyer program and, and also launch an online residential rental data survey program. That's how we're going to be using the ARPA money that they designated to us so that that rental data can be used by all municipalities so that everyone can know what is vacancy right now from our people. Local investors who own their properties, local property managers saying, this is how many studios, single family homes, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. Here's what we have, here's what we're charging. So that when we're making decisions on a township by township basis or even a larger center region basis, we actually have our own data. I wish I could take credit for this grand idea, but there was a company that used to do this back when I was in corporate human resources. The CBICC had rolled this out, and we used it all the time as a part of our economic development, recruiting talent to move into the area because housing is a big issue. So we could pull it up and say, well, if you're looking to rent because you don't know which school district you want to be in yet, here's where you can look. So we had this grand plan, side note, to roll this out with marketing. We were ready. We were going to start in college, Ferguson, and Patton Township. And we were going to roll that out right after spring break in March of 2020. And that didn't happen because, you know, what happened? And also because we're in a college town, the rental data that we would have collected would have been worthless because so much of the rental units are housed with Penn State students or grad students, and, and we just didn't think that it was right. So we've really taken this time to step back and say, what do, what do people like in Ms. Wargo's seat really need to know about what's happening within their municipality? What do businesses need to know? So we've kind of revamped things, and with this funding from the ARPA money, we are working right now with a website developer. So it's all going to be, you know, interfacing with these owners and property managers so that we can get real time data and get that rolled out. So we're going to have meaningful data so that when we're looking at what type of housing, what locations for housing, we will have a better idea on the rental side, what we, what we have right now and what do we need. Okay, that was a lot. I just want to take a point of personal privilege. When I joined the land trust, we've been a part, my husband and I have been part of affordable housing for going on 30 years now together. So this is not something that I just decided back in 2017, I wanted to get involved. But something that I saw from a lot of other boards that I served on and roles that I played, we didn't have a regionalized approach to housing. So when I came in in the fall of 2017, I really wanted to try to foster that regionalized approach, especially within the center region. And we created a network with the regional planners and other government agencies, you know, code was involved and assessment from Willow Bank were involved, so that we could look and say, where are we? What are we doing? What are our requirements? Where are we the same? Where are we different? How do we develop a Fienlu? Do we have a Fienlu? You can imagine these riveting conversations, which a data geek like me was just thrilled with it. So we have, we have come a long way. We're not there yet, but we've come a long way. But because of that, that connection with the Center County Housing and Land Trust within these municipalities, I knew that college and Ferguson both were looking at amending their workforce housing ordinances in the 2324 work, work plan. So I pulled everyone together, and we pulled the ordinances out and said, where are we? What do we need to do differently? So I appreciate, and we, on behalf of our board and our volunteers, we appreciate that folks like Ferguson Township, you allow us to be involved from the really highly technical, knowledge-based side, but also that practical application and trust that we're going to serve the constituency with honor and dignity and respect, and we're going to fight for the people who live here. The ordinance amendment that you're going to be receiving later, later this evening, what I see it doing is it really is bringing the Ferguson Township ordinance in alignment with what the other municipalities ordinances have in two ways. The income range to serve more people and also where housing can be built. So I've been behind the scenes, working with your staff and, and working with leadership. I'm kind of like the phantom, I'm there, but nobody ever sees me. But I'm just really excited about what the future holds because I believe that Ferguson Township is poised and ready to have a real growth spurt, and it's going to be, it's going to be helping a lot of workforce housing. So thank you for your support in the past, for the support now and in the future, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any right now.
Thank you, Missy. Anyone have any questions? Matt? Jeremy?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much for all you're doing for the community. We really appreciate you. All right, moving on to environment, there's no report. I'm going to stop there for just a minute. Sintrees, I'm sorry, I forgot in the beginning to do the roll call.
It's okay. It's okay. That's all right. So I'll go ahead and just do a roll call here. I'll move into that. So Ms. Strickland? Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Gracie Griffin? Mr. Heller?
Here.
I have a quorum.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
And I've been able to hear you the whole time.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. All right, so we're going to move on to the COG reports, COG and Regional Committee reports. So the first one is the Parks and Recreation, the Special Governance Committee. And I just had that meeting on Friday, and boy, that one was an interesting one. We were trying to, so that meeting consisted of, we, we had a moderator that was helping us with lead our discussion. She was basically trying to get us to walk around in somebody else's shoes to understand what we all perceived, how we could make center region parks and recreation the best for everybody. And so we looked at it from user perspective, authority perspective, forum member, municipal elected official perspective, and all tried to come up. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know that we nailed down a problem statement yet. I, it really just became clear that we have a lot of work to do there in terms of the governance and how to make it the most effective and for center region parks and recreation. So that is a work in progress. And once we come up with a problem statement that we sort of identify, I will share that with you and welcome any feedback on parks governance issues from you once we sort of hammer out what our problem statement is.
Okay.
And that's what I have to report for that. And Facilities Committee, they had a cancellation notice. I know they just-
We just met today.
You did? Okay. Because I was going to say, I saw Frank, and he said you met.
Yeah. So is that, I guess this is appropriate then, even though there's a cancellation notice in the agenda, I mean, we did have a meeting today, a couple of the high level things that we talked about, kind of the long range facilities plan, how we strategically planned. They were actually did a lot of backstories, back information about how strategic plans are put together, what they're used for, some of the ways that they do things. We also heard from folks in maybe some of the other townships about, hey, look, now that we have a way of doing this, let's start putting some data in there. Let's start moving forward. Let's, you know, figure this out. So it was really kind of an interesting one from that perspective. Also had the regional fire protection. We learned about the HVAC issue impacting Patton. So learned about that. Also kind of a nice relationship where one of the volunteers from Alpha, that's also at Patton, essentially does all the HVAC and assesses things kind of on the side for them. So you'll probably notice the name Barina, which I thought was very cool that they've kind of thought outside the box of a way that they can save some money and, you know, support each other by having this, this person, you know, thankfully, go around and assess everything. So that was nice. There were also some other issues they had mentioned with the HVAC related to, you know, cost where they're going to have to rebid. Long story short, in having to rebid, some of the two bids that they received were wildly different, which of course, they were about to apply for a grant, so they had to pull that back and then kind of do a reassessment. So that was another high level thing that we talked about. And then finally, the Whitehall Road Regional Park, the 1A phase, it's almost finished. They're doing some, planning some walkthroughs. However, there is no early opportunity for anybody on any board to go out there yet because it's just not safe because of access to the road and everything else. So yeah, it was a great meeting, and I don't know, how was that for my first report out? I don't know.
Brilliant.
Good? We'll go with that.
Brilliant. Just for future reference too, I'm not sure, we, we did have a form that we could use sometimes if it's easier just to write it down and submit a written report. That's also available, but if you run out of time like I do, sometimes it's just easier to come and give a verbal report, so.
Thank you. So yeah, that was it. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
I was going to say, we're going to tell him that he has to have his report done in like a few, a few short hours.
Oh, golly. Oh, golly, no.
Oh, boy.
Not at all. So thank you, thank you. Thank you for subring on that committee for us. All right then, we will move on to, are there any other committee reports? And I don't, I don't think so.
HR meets tomorrow, so I'll be presenting at my, our next meeting.
All right, then we'll move on to staff reports.
Thank you. Provided with the Agenda Packet is my manager's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I have, well, no, just, but just one comment. I was super excited to read about the, the working with the other township managers in the plastic bag ordinance. I love that that is still somewhere back on our back burner, but-
Yes, there have been two meetings this summer.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right, Public Works Director report. I don't see Dave Madrick, or his report was in the agenda. If anyone has any questions?
Nope.
All right. Planning and Zoning Director.
My report is included in the agenda. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Seeing none. All right then, we will move on to unfinished business. And this is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, County of Pennsylvania, Ferguson Township, adopting the 2024 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan Program. So Sintrees.
Thank you. And provided with the agenda is a brief narrative just reviewing the recent activity that has presented us to this evening. I'll do a quick recap. So July, on July 18th, 2023, the board authorized an advertisement for the public hearing to be held this evening on the 2024-2028 Capital Improvement CIP Plan. The CIP has been presented by myself and the Finance Director and reviewed by the Board of Supervisors at two public special meetings held on July 12th and July 13th, as well as a virtual road tour where proposed street projects were reviewed. The board took action to add, remove, or modify proposed items in the CIP at the two special meetings, as you may recall. And the changes, as requested by the Board of Supervisors, were incorporated into the document for board review and authorization to advertise this evening's public hearing at the July 18th regular meeting. A link is provided in the Agenda Packet to view the CIP, and we look to the Board of Supervisors to take action this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, I will open the public hearing. For any members of the public who wish to comment, if you would like to comment, please go to the podium, state your name and your municipality of residence.
My name is Mark Kunkel. I'm a resident here in Ferguson Township. On July 24th, I sent the board members a letter, which I've been advised that you've been unable to respond to. Not sure exactly why, but I did put my, my comments earlier in writing to you, but haven't had a response from any of the board members to date. So I've been advised that I need to come here this evening to have a dialogue with the board on some observations I've had with the Capital Improvement Program, which was prepared by the manager and the Finance Director in accordance with the Home Rule Charter. Both of your meetings were held during a very interesting time of the day, noon to 2:30 in the afternoon, which makes it pretty difficult for many of the working families and taxpayers in this community to participate, but nevertheless, that's when it was done. So I guess my first question is, do board members have a copy of the CIP that they can reference this evening?
Yes.
Is there a summary that you can provide at this point in time of the changes that have been made to the draft CIP so that we have a better understanding of what changes were made during your public meetings and your hearing, or the date that you set this hearing?
I'm going to look to the manager that any of our comments were incorporated into what's in tonight's agenda. Is that-
Correct. The comments that were provided at the July 12th and July 13th meeting were incorporated and reviewed by the board at the July 18th meeting.
And I think some of our comments would have been also in the minutes from those, which are in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, I just want to really focus on the year 2024. And we're in August of 2023. Typically, township staff will start to prepare the 2024 budget in September so that it's ready for the board's consideration in early November. And so why do I want to really focus on, on that year? Well, historically, the public works capital projects for 2024, the work on those design, the field work, et cetera, will start very soon after this Capital Improvement Program budget is approved. They will not wait until January 1st, when the appropriations are made in next year's budget. There's just no way that they would have those plans prepared and bid documents done and ready to put those projects out in, for construction in 2024. So very shortly after this CIP, Public Works Department and the Engineering Section will start work on this. So 2024 is a very, very important year in this planning process. So I have a couple of questions for the board under your consideration. If you can go to page 20 of your, of the CIP, this is a table that shows the, the general fund budget or, or fund balance beginning each year, the revenues that are anticipated, the expenditures that are anticipated, any change in fund balance and what the projected fund balance is going to be. This chart shows that the CIP proposes using 11.3% of the fund balance in 2024. That increases annually by an additional 13% in 2025, 15.6% in 2026, 17.6% in 2027, and 18.5% in 2028. This is showing a trend of a continual decline in the general fund budget, resulting in a negative $5.3 million in 2028. Now, I'm not new to this process, so I know that this, this is kind of a historical situation. But if you go back and look at- this, this is kind of a historical situation. But if you go back and look at Capital Improvement Program budgets for the last several years, you'll find that that general fund budget has come down from over 40% to a projected 25% in 2024. So there's a, there is a historical trend here that's happening, that the township is spending more than it's taking in every year. And little by little, that fund balance is being reduced. I guess I want to know from the board's perspective, is this really kind of good budgeting practice? You know, historically, having this happen may have not been a good practice, and I would take partial responsibility for that. But I don't think going forward that we should be projecting those kinds of negative fund balances going forward. You know, we should be either trying to either live within our means or being transparent that we're going to have, need a tax increase in order to fund what's being suggested as capital improvements in the budget. If I can reference you to page 21 of the CIP under the Park Improvement Fund, maybe the board can explain to me how we start the year in 2024 with a negative fund balance. Anybody, you know, give me a, I'm just wondering, we're starting off in 2024 with a negative $500 and $2,000 fund balance. How do, how do we do that? And then we're going to spend more than what we're going to take in, resulting in additional negative fund balance. This is like going to the grocery store and having less than anything in your credit card, buying groceries, and walking out of the store with a negative, with a negative fund balance. Maybe you can help me out with that. I'd appreciate some, what your perspective is on that.
So I, first, I wanted to address the first, I will get to that in just a minute. But your first comment about writing to us, yes, we did receive your letter. Thank you. We always appreciate the feedback. I'm just going to tell you that for the response to that, traditionally, the way we as a board work is a chain of command issue. And since Lisa's been out of the country, we've been waiting for her to come back. And my understanding is, is that she does plan to address your letter. And so thank you for coming in and bringing your comments here. But it is a chain of command issue, and we are going to let the chair handle that response to you.
I think the manager would tell you that any collaboration that you might do, you know, through either telephone conversations, et cetera, for her response to me that might reflect your opinion is, is violation of the sunshine law. So you cannot collaborate and have her respond to me as the board's response. It would only be her response. It cannot be the board's response.
Right, right. Which is why we're glad you're here today to provide your comments. But as a response to you, it's a chain of command thing that we tend to let the chair handle all our communications.
Okay, so in the future, I guess, any, any communication would only be to Lisa. We would not communicate to you at all on anything.
If you wanted to write to us, you're welcome, but to expect a response, I don't think would be appropriate. It would come from the chair.
Madam Chair, or Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I just also want to acknowledge that according to the charter, and I think Mr. Kunkel's aware of this, that we have the citizen's right to be heard. And so there's several variations and opportunities for a resident of Ferguson Township to address the board directly. Certainly coming to the regular meeting and addressing the board like Mr. Kunkel currently is, the board is not under any obligation to respond this evening, but certainly can if deciding to as part of the chair or the person running the meeting. Also, you could submit, as a resident of Ferguson Township, you could submit, I believe it's seven days prior to a meeting, a request for an agenda item to be on the agenda, at which point that would, the topic from the citizen would be on the agenda and would certainly then bring a discussion to the board to have that, either the dialogue or just afford the resident to receive a response. So there are those options. I think that the email that I received from Chair Strickland is that she received it, and she looks forward to responding to Mr. Kunkel when she gets back and returns back from vacation. I think if Mr. Kunkel wanted to address you all individually, you certainly are well within your right to respond to him individually. I think, I can speak for myself, when I responded to Mr. Kunkel, I said, when you address the board, the board as a whole cannot respond to you because that would be a sunshine violation. Addressing you all individually certainly positions a different, a different situation, and you all would be within your right, as you should, respond appropriately to your constituents. I'll just leave it at that for opportunities for individual residents of Ferguson Township to be able to look to the charter for citizens' right to be heard to receive, as long as they follow through the proper protocol, then of course, the board will address.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
So back to the Park Improvement Fund.
So to answer that question, sorry, I'm going on more as the document, as a planning document, as opposed to a budgeting document. Any clarification, Centris? I will look for help from you because you would say it in a much more articulate manner than I am.
I will try. I will try.
Thank you.
You know, I think that the, certainly I would agree with you that having ending balances and starting balances, beginning balances in a capital improvement plan sometimes can be misleading and certainly can position the document. Of course, if we look at the, let me pull up the park fund, so I can provide a reference. So if you look at, and I guess I'm looking at the 2021, this one popped up here, you know, you can look at the 2020, you can look at the projected, you would look at the forecasted, and then you would look at what's actually budgeted. So if you're looking at the summary fund in the parks, believe what Mr. Kunkel is saying to the board is that there is a negative fund balance. But what, what you don't see that is a little, and I would say is misleading, and you may recall at the beginning of the July 12th meeting, I said to the board, it would be greatly received and appreciated if staff could review the format and presentation of the CIP, because the way that it's currently been presented for the last several years, it, it, it's just got, it hasn't been representing with accuracy for the last five, seven years. And an example of that is certainly the parks. And then as we transition with the, you know, from a former finance director who used a particular model to present and prepare the CIP, and as we transition to our new finance director who began just two weeks prior to beginning the development of the CIP, she only had the model to use from the former finance director. And throughout that process, she would often say, I don't understand how or why the design has been created, but I'm going to utilize his model. And so, for example, she would refer to hardcoded numbers. So if you draw your attention to the parks fund, and I'm going to look over to James or anyone who may have it up so I can find it, what page it's on, on the CIP, so I can reference.
Page 21 has the.
Page 21.
Balances, projected expenditures and revenues.
Okay, there we are. Thank you, Mr. Kunkel. So let me scroll down here to the parks. Okay, so if you look at the, in 2024, you look and see at the revenues and expenditures. So the revenues, let's go with 2024. I don't have the details in front of me. But what you see there is a inner transfer from the general fund. We do not charge our residents to go to the parks. So when I say it's misleading, for example, it's really, and we should consider actually being more transparent and calling it an inner transfer from the general fund, and then have another item that says grants, because what you would see is the hardcoded number from our former finance director's model was that he was already kind of what we would refer to as a hardcoded number. He would just have a threshold set 400,000, 500,000. And so there was already like an expectation that the township was going to, for whatever reason, I can't even speak to it. We don't have any policy or standard operating procedure. But the former finance director would just identify saying like, we're going to assume that the township will transfer $400,000 from the general fund plus whatever grants are, you know, going to be awarded. I can tell you that we've applied for some grants, and we're anticipating possibly an award from LWCF, as well as an award from DCNR. So that revenue line for 2024 that currently shows 836,500, that is technically, depending on your level of interest in using finance terms, it's not revenue. It's grants, and it's an inner transfer fund. So when I listen to Mr. Kunkel's comments, he certainly is, you know, I appreciate his comments. It brings necessary attention, right, to how we display and present our CIP. But I would go as far as to say, the revenue term itself is misleading. And I look forward to the opportunity to actually breaking out to better appropriately depict what's happening in the operating budget. Because in the CIP, what's happening here as well, let's move into 2025, all, all of what you see, that beginning balance, sure, it's negative. And I think to Mr. Kunkel's point, if we were looking at an operating budget, that certainly would be a concern. But we're looking at projections and forecasting. And right now, we're forecasting that with a hardcoded number of revenue that's technically an inner transfer fund of 400,000 plus grants, then you use the expenditures, you have negative $11,000 remaining, which would show an ending balance of 513,567. And that has a whole wide range of assumptions. It's assuming that we get the grants. It's assuming that, that the board's going to want to do the inner transfer fund of all of that. And then that's the number that's starting our beginning balance of 513,000 and $567. I would go as far as to say, there's absolutely very little that would say you should rely on that being the beginning balance. Certainly, I hear Mr. Kunkel, the concern is that it's negative. It is a concern. Arguably, if our finance director had more time, perhaps she could have done a trick, and she could have just taken that negative 513,000, added that to the, the inner transfer fund of 400,000, and it would look a lot cleaner. But I don't know that it would be as transparent or as clear depicting what's actually happening. So I think what Mr. Kunkel's bringing to the board's attention certainly warrants continued conversation. I would go as far as to recommend that we actually remove this entire section from the Capital Improvement Plan, but we keep it in the operating budget, and we really look for models that allow for a lot more accuracy and representation of what's happening.
Thank you so much, Centris. So yeah, Mr. Kunkel, please feel free to continue to provide your concerns about the CIP. But I think Centris is really getting at where our hands are tied here. This is more planning and not operational budgeting. So we welcome the rest of your comments.
So I guess we can assume that all of the fund balances at the beginning of 2024 are not real numbers.
I think it's fair to say that there is, there's very little to show what exactly we can expect at the end of this year. It's based off of a projection, a forecast model that's been used traditionally during your time as manager and the former manager. But after review, and I really appreciate the feedback that you had, while I didn't necessarily align with your concern, it certainly brought a high level of concern and further supports my request to the board that they accept my recommendation to present this in a different format next year.
Well, let me move on then to two of the funds that are called enterprise funds. These would be your streetlight and hydrant funds. The streetlight fund, enterprise funds generally, should have revenues and expenditures almost mirror each other. There should be very, very little fund balance in any, any enterprise fund. It should be money in, money out. Both your streetlight and hydrant fund, and in particular, the hydrant fund, were showing revenues exceeding expenditures significantly to the tune that have, that the fund balance is actually growing. So I would hope that during your operating budget discussions, that you would think about reducing your assessments on streetlights and fire hydrants. There's no need to be carrying these large fund balances. You know, your people that are paying for those shouldn't have to pay more than what, what the service actually costs. The stormwater fund, again, this is supported by a fee. We're showing a pretty substantial negative fund balance to start there. We're showing that the fee is not going to generate anything more than 1.3 million dollars roughly. But we're showing expenditures in 2024 of 3.1 million dollars. I mean, even if that fund balance were in the positive, you'd have to increase the stormwater fee by two and a half times what it is already. I mean, these, this is a public document, you know, it is, it is an intention that the township is showing in transparent way to the taxpayers, township, about what your plans are. So I think we can only assume from this that there's either going to be an increase in the stormwater fee, there's going to be a tax increase, or there's going to have to be a rather radical adjustment to the expenditures in that fund. My last comment, the General Obligation Fund, which is on page 22. Again, this is like your mortgage. You wouldn't put the total value of your mortgage in the bank and then keep adding to it. You just, you wouldn't do that. You wouldn't put that in an escrow account and say, I owe $100,000 on my house. I'm going to put $100,000 in the bank, but I'm going to add 100,000 every year after that. That just doesn't make sense, does it? This, again, should be money in, money out, a very small balance. This has a, almost a half a million dollar balance in it. So what does that really mean? That means that this fund is also supported by a transfer from the general fund. So there is almost a half a million dollars of transfer that doesn't have to happen at least in 2024. And it gives you a little more leeway on your general fund in that respect. Overall, I'd have to tell you, I'm a proponent of the CIP. I think it's a good financial planning tool, but it needs a good dose of reality. Township's not growing as fast as it has in the past. Single-family home construction has stalled. And why is that important? Many times, single-family homes that are built on individual lots have two wage earners. This township, it has to survive on the earned income tax, the way our tax structure is set up. 75 or 80% of your total tax revenues come from earned income. So you've got to have a little bit of growth in this township in order to put off additional tax increases. And so I would say that we really need to be careful about what we're planning here and how we're, how we're making expenditures. You know, and at the same time, I noted the staff is increasing, growing costs, and it represents a larger portion of the general fund budget. So all of these things combined, leave the board with a lot to think about coming up in 2024 in order to stay within your financial means of your taxpayers. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We really appreciate it. And I'll just offer that we really appreciate you being here to speak to us directly and, and in the public eye. And as we transition, as Ms. Martin had mentioned, we have new staff here. And as we start to transition and, and move things, we're not where we want to be yet, but we're getting there. And we appreciate it, and we welcome you to come back for budgeting and of course, all the other meetings and appreciate your comments.
Because it's not an easy job.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing then, and I will look for a motion. Everyone has to switch back to the agenda.
I'll follow your lead, Jeremy, if you like.
Bear with me. Thank you. I'll move that the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors adopt the resolutions stated in the agenda packet.
And this is Matt Heller of a second.
All right, any comments from the board? Any discussion?
No, but I appreciate the public input because that is so important for everything that we're trying to do here, as well as the transparency and increasing that. It's not lost on me, the timing of these events and everything like that during the day. I think we can probably do better to schedule them in the upcoming years and really learn from kind of our experience this year in that. So I'm excited again for kind of taking a hard look at that next year and making it as transparent as possible with the comments that we heard this evening and everything else.
Absolutely, I agree. I think our finance director's stepping in and doing so much work and even having to push it back a little bit to let her get her feet underneath her. So we appreciate the input and the patience, so.
Definitely have to give a shout out to the finance director going into a new role that was filled by someone that had been with the township for a very long time and having to, you know, a lot changes over time, that's for sure. And definitely appreciate the public input and would definitely concur with Matt as well as you on taking a look at our meetings and when we come together so that, you know, we can get as much of the public that would like to participate in the process as possible. I apologize, my mic keeps cutting out on me here. But to get the public involved in the process, definitely appreciate having them here.
And even on the larger platform, right, we heard last, I'm sorry, two weeks ago from COG, right? And we saw some of the financial projections and stuff that they had. And you say, wait a second, these should look more like ours, or maybe ours should look more like yours. So there's actually a larger conversation that should be happening as well to make everything as easy for everyone to understand so they don't have to go hunting and figuring all these things out on their own and that things look the same, so.
Thank you so much. So with that, we had discussion and a motion, so all those in favor? This is a roll call vote, thank you, Jeremy. Thank you. Ms. Martin, please.
Yes, thank you. This is a roll call vote for Resolution 2023-30. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Thank you. Vote passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to new business, the consent agenda is listed there. Does anybody wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? All right, so I'll take a motion to approve that.
I, Mr. Thompson, will move that we approve the consent agenda listed in Section 11, Item 1.
And this is Matt Heller, I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. All right, then, excuse me, we move on to a discussion and authorization to advertise a draft amendment to Chapter 27, Zoning, Section 716, Workforce Housing. And we'll look to Ms. Worgo, please.
Providing the agenda is a draft amendment to Chapter 27, 716, Workforce Housing. This ordinance is codified under supplemental regulations and applies to the traditional town development and the Terrace Street scape zoning districts. Currently, the township requires a contingency of workforce housing units to be built in both of those zoning districts. The draft amendment included in the agenda proposes to amend applicability the area median income for rentals and for sale units and add additional workforce housing options for developers. Planning Commission reviewed the draft amendment at the June 12 and June 26 regular meetings and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. So this evening, I'm going to kind of dovetail off of Missy's presentation. Since we do work collaboratively on these ordinances, since it's such a small crowd tonight, I'm really going to be looking for the board's feedback on how far in depth you want me to go on what workforce housing is and, or just dive right into the changes. So I know Jeremy was on Planning Commission back when we did the last amendment. He's probably very familiar with all of the conversations that have been had. Patty was also on the board, she was brand new, I believe. Still, this will be the second time around for her. So Matt, anything, feel free to stop me. Don't hesitate.
Something just came up in my real small area plan and other places that I've worked throughout the township and, you know, being privy to those conversations previously in planning and zoning, I think I'm good, especially with the presentation and information earlier too. So, thank you.
So specifically, our township's workforce housing program, we are aiming to bridge the gap between affordable housing and market rate housing. As Missy pointed out, we're providing an option for individuals who do not qualify for subsidized housing and they can't afford the market rate prices, you know, we're dealing with right now. So really, what we are focusing on right now is the first change, the area median income that we are trying to address with our ordinance. So currently, our ordinance, we help qualified individuals that are making 80% AMI to 120% AMI. So AMI is pretty much, represents the midpoint of a region's income distribution. It's calculated annually. So these levels can differ significantly from one area to another due to variations in local economies, housing costs, and other types of income disparities. So what we have in Center County, so ours is calculated, our MSA is Center County. So while that is a benefit if you live in Center Region, because we take into consideration other areas of Center County, it is a detriment to the individuals living outside of the Center Region because our numbers are skewing theirs. So there's this balance that we have to keep in mind. So the biggest change that came out in May of this year is the newly calculated AMI levels that we receive from HUD. So this is just an example of a one-person household. So this is me, I'm a single, I live by myself. It's easier to grasp before you start throwing more family members into the mix. So right now, our ordinance at 80% AMI, one-person household, they make $57,000 a year. That, in HUD's language, they can afford rent 1,400 a month, that's utilities included. So I don't know if anyone here has looked at rentals in this region lately. That is pretty much market rate. So what we're anticipating is market is going to continue to grow. So when we take this into consideration at staff level and planning commission level, having an ordinance that is restricting rentals for a one-person household at 1,400 is market rate, that's not really helping many people. So that is why staff and planning commission, we are recommending to lower that AMI specifically for the owner occupied units. Right now, we stop at 80, and we want to flip it and cap rentals. So we want to be helping anyone who's making between zero to, we've moved numbers around. So capping the rentals at 80% AMI. So we would not be helping individuals who are making more than 80% AMI when it comes to their rentals. We would be helping anywhere from zero to 80 with this draft amendment. So this is just a skew of what we're looking at, 60% AMI for one-person household, that's 43,000 a year. At the top of that level, 120, they make 86,000 a year. All right, so there's some perspective for everyone. It was really a gut check for a lot of the planners in the region when these numbers came out, just how significantly they have changed. So the biggest change on top of the AMI that Planning Commission and staff are recommending is that this ordinance is applicable in every zoning district in the township, not TTD and not just the Terrace Street scape everywhere. And the reality of it is, this ordinance is only triggered when 10 residential units or more are being proposed. So there are only so many zoning districts in the township that permit that type of development. So you won't see this ordinance being triggered in RA, in RR. We are talking, they're the only zoning districts where we permit this type of density, they're in the regional growth boundary. But it covers us to have it applied everywhere, regardless when those land development plans and proposals hit that 10-unit threshold. So currently, in our ordinance, in this example, we have a 100-unit multifamily building, and they are proposing 100 units. By our ordinance, they are required to provide 10 workforce units in that development. If they choose to build those workforce units onsite, offsite, or a new option that I will be explaining soon, designating existing units, they would get 10 bonus market rate units because they are building those units immediately, getting them online right now. So these are the options that, the options that we have right now are build onsite, build offsite, and fee and lieu. Those are the only three that we provide. We are recommending designating offsite and land donation as two additional options for developers because we're recognizing that depending on where that developer is, whether they're local, regional, they may have different strengths and weaknesses. A local developer may have more units in the township that they can designate as workforce units. They may have land being banked somewhere that they can donate instead. So it's really recognizing any type of developer and what their strengths may be given where they're coming from. So the, and I want to point out, the designating offsite is a very important option for this because we have many tax credit units in the township that are coming up on their sunset with HUD on affordability, which means that they will no longer be affordable. So if there is any way for us to capture those existing affordable units and keep them affordable through this type of program, that's a huge benefit to the township. And then for land donation, it must be within the regional growth boundary. And essentially, the appraisal of the land, or there may be a building on it, et cetera, it must equal or be greater than what the fee and lieu would have cost that developer to pay. So these three options, as I mentioned earlier, are the ones that would allow for the bonus units to be put into that. I call it, and the ordinance calls it, the sending development. Because those units are being built relatively quickly and brought online as opposed to land donation that may require more partnership with land trust, housing, or habitat. And the fee and lieu, we just get money and we need to figure out what we're doing with it. So this new option, the conditional use process, so this would only be applicable to the building onsite option. And I've seen this really in the student housing development specifically. So typically, when we get these proposals, they may have five-bedroom units, four-bedroom units, three, et cetera. Our ordinance says that they are required to provide those-like units in workforce units. So what we found is that there isn't a market for a five-bedroom workforce unit. And they sit vacant, they try to rent them for a year, pay the fee and lieu, they're out of the program. So what this conditional use process allows the developer to do is to recognize the market for workforce units. And so in the example I have here, we have two three-bedroom units are required by this development, two two-bedroom units, and six one-bedroom units. So total, we're getting 16 beds right now, required. The developer may go through the conditional use process and say, you know, there isn't really a market for the three-bedroom units as workforce. So what they can do is they can alter that mix and build more one-bedroom units or two-bedroom units, whatever the market is dictating for those workforce units. So you can see at the end, we still get the same amount of workforce units, beds being provided. It may just be a different type of mix that we know is needed in the market. And then fee and lieu, this is another change. We are recommending that 40% of the units may be paid in fee and lieu, and that is rental and for sale. Currently, we permit 100% of rental units to be paid in fee and lieu. And what the Center County Housing Study has told us is that we also need affordable rentals too. And to allow developers to pay 100% fee and lieu, we're not going to be getting any built rental units online. So we're matching the 40% to our for sale units. That's currently what we have. If we had a subdivision of 10 workforce units not being rented, they could pay four of them. They have to build six of them, essentially. So that's what this picture is showing here. You have your 10 workforce units, they can pay for four in fee and lieu. They have to build six, and because they're building them, or whatever it may be, they get six bonus market rate units for bringing the workforce units online for the township. And those are really the big changes that we have for this ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Do you have any questions, Matt or Jeremy?
First up, I must commend the Planning Commission as well as staff and even Missy. Like, this is, I am so much more in favor of this ordinance than I had been in the last one. And I like that that AMI has been lowered because I think we were missing a lot of folks when it was at 80. And always been, I really do feel that our workforce that would like to live here should have that opportunity to be closer to their employer. And I think that would really be beneficial in our service industries. As somebody that has overseen staffing and a retail environment on a snow day or where you have a lot of people that live outside the area that have various car problems and other traffic delays, and then trying to just keep paying customers happy when you're short staffed because nobody can get the work for one reason or another. And the other thing that I do like too about, as we're looking at workforce housing, is I saw in the section where you had all the various purposes, I think also workforce housing is a great way that we, as a community, can further us our environmental sustainability goals by mitigating the amount of commuting traffic and getting them into Ferguson Township if they so desire to. That goes along with our environmental bill rights, our commitment to net zero by 2025, and I think even comments that we've had in various strategic plans over the past several years, so.
I just want to add that, you know, I agree with everything that Mr. Thompson has said. And I am curious to know also kind of what the projections might be in the future, since it is restricted to maybe the regional growth. I'm absolutely for the ordinance, and I'd like to see, you know, data. I'm a data-driven person too, right? Where are we today? How many do we have? What are some projections here? And how are we really helping the community to go ahead and empower them to work in the community?
Yeah, so data-wise, right now, we have no units built or, well, technically, we have one land development plan under review that would be required to provide those workforce units. But right now, we have no fee and lieu, and we have no workforce units. And that was really the genesis of why Planning Commission wanted to look at this again. Because we had this in place since '21. I think we worked on most 20, adopted at the beginning of '21, the last amendment. And we still haven't gotten anything. Granted, COVID happened, et cetera. That had a significant impact. But same day, I think Planning Commission was looking at the land development plans that we received and why wasn't this ordinance applicable? And could it have been had we had made this change? So I think that's really what we are seeing tonight, are those changes that Planning Commission and staff has picked up on throughout this process.
Well, with that, I'm looking forward to seeing where it goes and, you know, getting the data over time and everything. And I think it sends the right message that, you know, we're interested in this and... and, you know, folks are, that are willing to and want to occupy these units, we're here to support. So, that's great.
I really like the idea of the, being more flexible with developers and some other options. I think that's particularly brilliant, so thank you for that. All right, then, I will take the motion that's listed in the agenda about advertising for a public hearing on this.
Yeah, I'll move that the Board of Supervisors authorize the advertisement of a public hearing to amend Chapter 27, Zoning, Section 716, Workforce Housing.
And this is Matt Heller, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, and then we will move on to 180 Science Park Court Minor Subdivision Plan. Again, back to you, Jenna.
Provided with the agenda is the 180 Science Park Court Minor Subdivision Plan of Tax Parcel 24001A054. It's about a 39,000-square-foot lot. This plan was submitted on April 5, 23, last revised May 18, 2023. And the applicant is proposing to subdivide the lot into two residential lots. The parcel is located within the single-family residential zoning district. On April 18, 2023, the Board of Supervisors granted a waiver from 225112 sidewalks for the installation of sidewalks along the lots. And that was because this was a historical neighborhood. There are no sidewalks on either side of this street in this area. Staff and Planning Commission have reviewed the plan and is recommending approval with conditions as outlined in the Community Planners Memorandum dated July 18, 2023.
Great, thank you. I will open it up for any public comment. Saying none, all right. There is a motion listed here in the agenda?
I, Mr. Thompson moved that the Board of Supervisors move forward with Item 3 in Section 11 of the Agenda Packet.
This is Matt Heller and I will second as read.
Thanks, discussion or comments?
I have none.
None? Okay, all right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion passes. All right. Then, next item on the agenda is authorization for advertisement of authorities, boards, and commissions, our ABC vacancies, sentries.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is a brief review of the authorities, boards, and commission vacancies where staff would like to open an application period to advertise, with hopes that we get some applications from residents to serve. Of course, with the appointment of Supervisor Heller, we have, well, that'll make the second vacancy there in the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee. We also have a vacancy in the Tree Commission. We have two vacancies, or we have a vacancy with the Tax Review Board. And then we have two alternate, or we have one vacancy on the core board and as well as three alternate vacancies with the zoning hearing board. So we'd like to advertise and try and solicit some of the, or solicit some applications for residents to serve as well as, and most notably, the board is asked to consider soliciting applications for the appointment of the Regional Human Relations Commission. You may recall earlier this year, the Board of Supervisors adopted the anti-discrimination ordinance as well as the Regional Human Relations Commission ordinance. And as part of that ordinance, it's establishing a commission of, I believe, seven appointees. And Ferguson Township, being a regional participant, needs to appoint one resident of Ferguson Township to then serve on the Regional Commission that will be organized and facilitated by the State College Borough. But they will essentially hear any of the complaints for review and consideration of adjudication. And again, in the Agenda Packet, we're looking to, it's noting that we're looking to open the application period from August 2 to August 28, at which point we could bring to the board, hopefully, a recommendation for the appointment to serve on the Regional Human Relations Commission, as well as any other appointments to fill the vacancies as part of our local authorities, boards, and commissions.
Just to clarify that we will still be running our usual ABC application towards the end of the year, yes?
Yes, that is correct. We have several appointments that will expire at the end of this year that aren't currently vacant but will be vacant come December 31 of 2023. So we will need to open the application period again in November, or maybe even as early as October, November, so the board has time to do interviews with any potential applicants to appoint next year. But the vacancies that are listed in the narrative here are currently vacant. And if we can, we'd like to be able to fill them. And so, yeah, we'll have a round two later in the year.
Great, thank you. All right, there is a motion listed in the agenda.
Well, I feel as part of the person who caused some of this, I will go ahead and I'll make a motion that the Board of Supervisors move to authorize the staff to open an application period and advertise the vacancies to solicit applications from residents interested in serving on ABC.
I'm Mr. Thompson, will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so. Any discussion, comments?
No, I'm really looking forward to see who comes out, especially for the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan because it was so near and dear to me, so.
I was gonna say, I'm a true fan of our authorities, boards, and commissions. And I think our board right now is definitely a majority former ABC members. So it is definitely a way for our residents to get involved in the township. And as some former elected officials will say, it's a very fun experience. They like the ABCs better.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. We will move on then to communications to the board.
The only communication that I have was from Mr. Kunkel, which we had addressed earlier.
And I, as well, received a communication from Mr. Kunkel. I also did receive some additional communications from other members of the community in reference to topics from doing business in Ferguson Township to grass and weeds and spongy maws.
Great, yeah, I also received the communication from Mr. Kunkel and also some communications regarding grass and weeds ordinance and things like that, so.
We must have got a lot of rain since that drought we had earlier in the year.
Yes. All right, moving on then to calendar items. They are listed in the agenda, but the, one of note that I will point out is the Terrace Streetscape Zoning District Rewrite Joint Work Session again, Part 2 on August 14. Other than that, we have reached the end of our agenda, so I'll take a motion.
Well, the chair doesn't get the motion tonight. I'll move that we adjourn the meeting.
All right, I accept that, thank you. Thank you.